At six o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. And with that, can we do a roll call starting to my right?
Mark Shiner with Planning and Zoning.
Rich Lines, Planning and Zoning.
Francine Larson, Blue Hill Township.
Terrence Van Dray, Clear Lake Township.
Steve Demueles, Palmer Township.
Ryan Adams, Oroc Township.
Bruce Avell, Big Lake Township.
Butch Hassel, Livonia Township.
Kathy Sims, Haven Township.
Gary Gray, Sherburne County Commissioner, District Four.
Lynn Wataszek, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Gary, what's your planning and zoning?
This meeting is being videotaped and recorded for record keeping purposes. We are a recommending body. Our decisions tonight will be forwarded to the Sherburne County Board, I think on December seventeenth, nine o'clock in this room.
Correct.
All right. Any changes to the minutes of October seventeenth?
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
I'll second. I'll second.
You second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carried. Any changes to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chair, I just would like to mention a gravel mine at the end of the meeting, so if we could touch on that at the end.
At the end. All right. With that, let's move on to our first item tonight.
We need to approve the agenda, please.
Oh, we need to approve the agenda. Your motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
For a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion is approved. Item number one is Acorn Mini Storage. It's requesting a name change to an existing interim use permit on a highway planned unit development. The address is 23933-119th Street Northwest. It's Lot One, Dean Anderson's third addition. It's Section 27 of Livonia Township. It's 8.13 acres in the general rural district. Mark?
Perfect. Board packet had several attachments, aerial photos, written description, phase construction landscaping, photos of fencing, proposed building plans and grading plans. None of these have changed. There are no plans to change the operation. Livonia Township did recommend approval of the request. Discussed how the property was looking. The board would like to note there is no outside storage permitted with mini storages, so that is just a comment the township wanted to convey. This is coming back in front of the board because in 2001, we approved an interim use permit for a highway PUD for a mini storage. They've developed about half the property to date, and the property owner is looking to sell the property to another company, and so we have a name change essentially is what's being done with this application. The applicant has indicated that he has no intent to change the operational plans or the building plans for the project, and basically we're looking at just putting a new name on this interim use permit. There are eleven conditions recommended with this application.
Are those conditions the same as the previous?
They are. They are. Changing names, I think we eliminated maybe one dealing with like the NPDS permit or something along those lines, but yes, conditions are virtually the same.
Is the applicant here? If you've come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Kirwin with Acorn Mini Storage, 2830 Fairview Avenue North, Roseville, Minnesota.
Anything to add to Mark's presentation?
No, it's pretty simple. I think Mark summed it up very well. We don't plan on making any changes. The only thing that'll be different is just we'll have our, a new sign with our logo on it, but it won't be any different than what's there.
And the eleven conditions are fine for you?
They're acceptable to us.
All right. Board, have any questions of Mark or the applicant? Hearing none. Let's open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this issue tonight? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue tonight? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue tonight?
Move to close.
All right. Is it moved to close or a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. What's the desire of the commission?
Mr. Chair? I would move to approve the CUP with the current eleven conditions.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, you will second it. With that, let's do the findings.
Nope, just making sure we're doing the findings. Thank you.
Okay. Number one, that the interim use permit will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity.
Yes, the neighboring properties to the west are existing residents, and to the east is US Highway 169. Property to the south has been rezoned to industrial, and the property to the north has been approved for a commercial flooring business.
All right. Number two, that the establishment interim use permit will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses predominant in the area.
Yes, the county zoning ordinance, Section 16.2, interim uses subdivision 5.16, planned unit development highway allows the establishment of a business on lands that abut a state or US highway if it is found to be appropriate use that will serve the local marketplace. The development of this property should not impede development on the surrounding vacant properties.
Okay. That adequate utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or being provided?
Yes, there are minimal public utilities needed for the development of this property. The applicant is not proposing to add a well or sewer to the property. Access to the business will be from 119th, a low-volume township road. The drainage plans provided by the applicant have been reviewed by the township engineer, which is Bogart Peterson, who stated quality, volume, and pre-post discharge rates are in compliance with the NPDES requirements.
Great. That adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking, loading space to serve the proposed use?
Yes, the applicant has sufficient parking space to accommodate the proposed use in accordance with county.
That adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations, and none of these will constitute a nuisance, and control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result.
Yes, the applicant's proposed plans for security, lighting, visual screening, and drainage do not constitute a nuisance to neighboring landowners. No complaints related to the operation of this business have been made.
With the completion of the findings, we have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Good luck on your endeavor.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mark.
Next item on the agenda is Jeremy and Tracy Robek requesting a preliminary and final plat approved of Robek addition insisting of two lots. The address is 11-824-232nd Avenue in Zimmerman, Section 27 of Livonia Township. It's 21.59 acres in the general rural zoning district.
Mitch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I just verify the applicants in the audience? Robek?
Do that? Okay. Just want to make sure. Working with the survey, I just want to make
sure you're here. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeremy and Tracy Robek are requesting a preliminary final plat of Robek addition. Livonia Township gave favorable comments. County surveyor, Russ Hyling, all comments have been addressed. David Rodell, Assistant Public Works Director, no concerns with the simple plat. It is on a county road, so there is required spacing, and they will need an access permit from Public Works for any future driveways. If they wanted to do a separate driveway, it would have to be on the far east of the proposed lot, or if they wanted to share a driveway, it would have to be on the proposed common lot line. No concerns with county ditch. And then Tom Crookshink with Mindot reviewed it. They didn't have any concerns. They are not proposing to access the US Highway 169. All access will be taken from the county road. Right now, it is a 21.59 acre meets and bounds parcel. They are proposing to split two and a half acre parcel for another dwelling. As of right now, we can only have one dwelling per parcel. The existing house was built in 2020, along with the septic was installed the same year. Wetland delineation was completed. Notice of decision was sent out on October 20th. There are no wetlands proposed to be impacted, and there are two proposed conditions. With that, the applicant is available for any additional questions.
I have a question for you. What's the ditch reapportionment?
That is, they're taxed on the ditch. They'll have to work with the auditor treasurer on getting any, the applicant might have more information on that, but it is, the way they're taxed, they would have to get appropriate. I've seen it once before probably, but if anyone has any, do you know that?
I think because the parcel was, what was the acre John?
It was benefiting from.
So if it was a 14 acre parcel, it's now going down to a 10 acre parcel, so their valuation per parcel is going to change, so.
All right. The applicant? Could you give your name and address, please?
Jeremy Robek. My wife Tracy's here. 118-37, or 118-24-237th Avenue.
Anything to add to Mark's presentation?
No, we're just, no, I don't. Thank you.
And you're aware of the two conditions? Not an issue?
Not an issue.
Okay. Any questions of the board? Hearing none. Let's open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here tonight to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here tonight to speak on this issue?
Move to close.
Move to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
With that, what's the desire of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
With the two conditions?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Bruce seconds, and with that, let's do, is there findings on this one?
Nope.
Nope. No findings. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three tonight is Rhonda Murray requesting an interim use permit for home business in an accessory building. It's dog grooming. The address is 14760-282nd Avenue Northwest in Zimmerman, Section 36 in Blue Hill Township. It's 1.75 acres in the general rural zoning district. Mitch, you're handling this one?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, Rhonda Murray, the applicant, is requesting to do a home business in an accessory building specifically for dog grooming. Blue Hill Township gave favorable, unanimous favorable comment for Rhonda to have a dog grooming business as long as all conditions of the county are met. I did hear back from Wildlife Refuge. They do not have any concerns. David Rodell, it's on a county road, no concerns. Right now, the applicant is operating a dog grooming business out of her residence, which is an allowable use. Seeing that she wants to move her operation to a detached garage, will require the interim use permit for a home business in an accessory building. It is 864 square foot. She has received building permits to do improvements, and she is working with a septic designer on getting a restroom and drains hooked up to the existing septic system. Main concern, obviously, is pet hair to get a trap, but that will be addressed in the septic review. Other than that, it's a pretty straightforward request. It anticipates three dogs a day. The trash pickup, normal trash pickup, will haul the waste away. The proposed hours are Tuesday to Saturday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and right now, Rhonda Murray is the only full-time employee. There are proposed eight conditions, and the applicant is in the audience to answer any further questions.
Question I have for you on one of the conditions, I think item six, all animal waste must be disposed of in a legal manner.
Yes.
What's legal matter? What are the requirements?
Waste, I mean, they can do, spread it on the property, but anything that would just be waste pickup, which she has proposed a legal manner, is, that is a waste.
So it'd be municipal solid waste, I don't.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one for Mitch. So are you anticipating any design changes for the septic because of the, because of the additional?
Already done.
Basically, it just needs a trap, a way to catch the dog hair.
So that, I mean, are we considering the other bathroom, like another bedroom?
Yeah, so that's, Doug, our building official, has been working with the licensed septic designer to make sure that the house is, you know, get the house and the accessory building, that the septic is sized adequately for both uses and to trap the dog hair. So that will be reviewed in the septic design.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Rhonda, could you state your name and address, please?
Rhonda Murray, 14760-281st Avenue Northwest.
Thank you. Any other additions to what Mitch stated? Could you address the animal waste?
Yeah, yeah. I contacted Vanderpool, who is my garbage, and the way that you're supposed to do it is you keep it in the, you put it in a plastic bag, tie both ends, put it in another plastic bag, tie both ends, and then stick it in the garbage. And they told me that they accept that, so.
You're familiar with the eight conditions that are being proposed?
Yeah.
No problem?
No problem.
All right. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Let's open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this issue tonight? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue?
Move to close.
Move to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
What's the recommendation of the commission?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve with the eight conditions.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce seconds, and with that, can you do the findings?
Ready?
That the interim use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the immediate vicinity.
Yes, the neighboring properties are 600 feet to the east and 1,175 feet to the west, with the Sherburne National Wildlife Refuge to the south. All work will be completed in the existing accessory building.
Number two, that the establishment of the interim use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area.
Yes. Policy Statement 16 of the Comprehensive Plan and the Economic Development, it is the county's directive to support home extended businesses that do not negatively impact the environment, general character of the neighborhood, or existing commercial industrial districts.
That adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided.
Yes, the applicant is using an existing detached garage and is not requesting additional utilities beyond what a normal residence would require.
Number four, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading, loading space to serve the proposed use?
Yes, the property is 1.75 acres and has enough off-street parking for the business.
And number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result.
Yes, the conditions that are proposed to be placed on the IUP, if approved, will address the concerns in number five.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, and we have the findings completed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is Tyler and Brandy Pilz requesting an interim use permit for a home business in an accessory building for designing and engineering 10-meter radio. The address is 23400-164th Street Northwest in Big Lake, Section 34 in Oroc Township. It's six acres in the general rural zoning district. Mark, I think you're handling this one?
Yep. Oroc Town Board recommended approval of the IUP, provided all county requirements are met. We did get a comment from David Rodell, Assistant Public Works Director. No concerns with the IUP. The owner plans to utilize existing driveway to access the site. The applicant is proposing to continue to operate a 10-meter radio designing and engineering business from their accessory building on their homestead residential property. They design radios and are manufactured off-site, and so it's kind of the design and engineering associated with two-way radios. The business is not open to the public. They have one part-time employee. According to the applicant, all deliveries are made directly to the property with a box truck one to two times a week. The business will be operating from less than 1,400 square feet of the existing accessory building. The remaining portion of this building, it's about a 5,000 square foot building, is for personal use. The property does not have direct access to County Route 15. The applicant takes access to the property through an easement across the property he owns. So the adjacent property to the east, he owns that parcel also. There's minimal waste generated by the business. They have a six-yard dumpster that manages all the waste generated from it, and if we could just kind of scroll down and show, this is kind of the floor plan. So there's that building, little bit of office space, and then, you know, so there's a portion that's used for business. That's the property, and that's the nature of their business. And with this request, I have eight conditions recommended for approval.
Is the applicant here? Can you state your name and address, please?
Tyler Pilz, 23400-164th Street Northwest, Big Lake, Minnesota, 55309.
Thank you. Anything to add to Mark's presentation?
No.
Pretty cut and dry?
And I, just for clarification, I actually misread. He has, there's five recommended conditions for this IUP. I had said eight.
One on the last page, all right. You're familiar with those five conditions, and they're okay?
Yes.
Any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I got one.
Attaboy.
All right. What's a 10-meter radio?
It's an amateur radio. It operates on 28 megahertz. 10 meters just refers to the length, one full wavelength, so about 33 feet.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else?
There isn't one.
We all needed to know that, didn't we?
Does that clear it up for you, Steve?
Next time I have a cocktail, I got something to think about.
All right, let's open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue?
Move to close the public hearing.
Move to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Carried. What's the desire of the commission?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the IUP with the five.
Five conditions.
Conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have you seconds? Let's do the findings.
Okay. These are staff recommended findings. Number one, that the interim use permit will not be injurious to the use or enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity.
Yes, all work will be completed in the existing accessory building.
Okay. That the establishment of the IUP will not impede normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses predominant in the area.
Yes. Policy Statement 16 of the Comprehensive Plan for Economic Development, it is the county's directive to support home extended businesses that do not negatively impact the environment, general character of the neighborhood, or existing commercial industrial districts.
Okay. That adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, other necessary facilities have been or being provided for?
Yes, the applicant is using an existing accessory building and is not requesting additional utilities beyond what a normal resident would require.
Okay. That adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking?
Yes, the applicant owns six acres, so there is sufficient off-street parking for this project.
Adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations, and none of these will constitute a nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result.
Yes, this business is not anticipated to cause offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration to the immediate area. All activities will be conducted in the accessory building.
It's been moved and seconded. We've completed the findings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Good luck on your 10-meter endeavor. Item number five, Excel Energy is requesting an interim use permit for a solar farm-related business.
Mr. Chair?
The address is 9464-80th Avenue Southeast, Clear Lake. It's Section 18 of Clear Lake Township. It's 5.17 acres in the agricultural zoning district.
Because of the perceived conflict of interest in this agenda item, I'll remove myself from the dais at this time.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Mitch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is Excel's request for the new ordinance that was just approved by the county board on Tuesday. Solar farm-related business. They are obviously officially applying for the interim use permit for that new interim use permit ordinance. So Clear Lake Township recommended approval as long as all zoning office requirements are met, and the proposed change to the ordinance needs to pass the county level also, which, again, it did on Tuesday. So again, the applicant is just proposing to utilize a property with the new zoning ordinance, solar farm-related business. That, again, that was November 19th. The operation will be surrounded by Sherco III Solar Farm, which will begin construction in fall 2024. The applicant can go into more detail when he goes to the podium, but there is a need for this, for the solar farms, for the house technicians, inventory and equipment that is awaiting recycling. They're also storing panels in these buildings. There are two existing buildings on the property. Each one will be used in some capacity. One building does have office space with a restroom. They anticipate 10 to 15 employees reporting to the site throughout the day. About 10 vehicles will be parked at the site with 10 to 15 vehicles parked intermittently throughout the workday. The applicant has proposed a 10-foot fence for security and screening. For the bathroom, there's a currently 2,000-gallon septic tank. Initially, we got a report from the designer that based off three employees, it would have to be pumped every seven weeks, but if they, we got a new report from the septic designer, if they used it to full capacity with the 15 employees, eight hours a day, five days a week, it would have to be pumped every two weeks. Again, we do have a pumper's agreement, and they are to notify the pumper within, when the manual visual alarm reaches 85% or shows red, contact us within two days. There will be a two-to-four-yard dumpster on site for waste generated, and with that, staff is proposing five conditions. And the applicant is here to answer any additional questions.
The applicant here, if you'd go to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Thanks. Pete Getz in Excel Energy, 414 Nicollet Mall, Minneapolis, 55401.
Anything to add to Mitch's presentation?
I think he covered it quite well. Thanks.
All right. You are familiar with the five conditions?
I am. No concerns.
Any questions of the commission?
Mr. Chair, is there a consideration for a drain field or an in soils?
We plan to use the tank that's there and just have it pumped. Yep, and the, as Mitch reported there, the septic designer installed an alarm system for that, did a bit of an upgrade, and they've looked at sizing it, and I think we're going to be fine pumping it, but we have no intention of changing that existing tank system on site. That'll, that should cover us.
I see. Thank you.
Will you be putting anything outside for storage?
Yep, so the solar inverters are too big to put into those buildings, right? They'll come on a semi. We'll have some backups out there, but that's the only thing that'll be stored outside. And again, inside that fence, and that'll provide screening, but the panels themselves, we'll have spare panels, and then we'll have things there waiting to be recycled, and those will be stored inside, right? As you can imagine, you know, you kind of build up inventory of panels that may have failed, and then you ship those out at once, right, as opposed to kind of shipping them out as you get them. So it's not a lot of material to store, but, you know, when you're installing a million-plus solar panels in an area, there are spares around, so.
Sure. As far as the failure of the solar panels, how do you dispose of those?
So they are recycled, right? So we'll store them on site until you get a big enough, basically, take a semi truck out at a time of solar panels, right? And there's recyclers that take those things apart and, you know, take the glass out, take the metals out, right, and recycle them properly. And of course, Excel's got permit conditions as part of that site to handle those correctly, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other conditions of the applicant? Any other conditions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I just had a question. So what kind of fence is it? Does it have slats in it so you can't see in it, or what is it?
It's a pretty tight chain link fence, mesh, so it's a one-inch-tall, 10-foot chain link mesh. Yep, so it does a pretty good job. It's similar to what we do at all of our substation sites, right, for screening and security, right? So it's, frankly, it's a security standard for Excel whenever we have, you know, kind of grid equipment or anything that's of high value or high consequence.
And has that fence been installed yet?
Is not installed yet at this site, so we'll have to pull, as stated in here, a building permit at the time, right? And we're showing it basically on the property line, so we'll surround the whole five acres with the fence, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done, let's open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this issue tonight? Anyone here to speak on this issue? Anyone here to speak on this issue?
Move to close.
Move to close, there a second? Drew seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried. What's the desire of the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the request subject to the five conditions.
The five conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been, motion and seconded. Can you do the findings, eh?
Yes, sir.
All right, ready, aye? Number one, that the interim use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the immediate vicinity.
Response is yes. The nearest neighboring residence is 320 feet northeast of this property. The majority of the land surrounding this property will be solar farms and will not have any residences.
And two, that the establishment of the interim use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area.
Response is yes. The IUP will not impede normal and orderly development. The property is 5.17 acres and will be surrounded mostly by solar farms and one residence.
And three, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided.
Yes. The applicant is using two existing buildings and is not requesting additional utilities beyond what a normal residence would require.
And four, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use?
Response is yes. There is adequate parking on the property for the proposed use.
And number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to the neighboring properties will result.
Yes. It is not anticipated to cause offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration. It'll be used as offices and storage for solar farm-related activities.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. We have completed the findings. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
One of the last items tonight is Excel Energy again requesting interim use permit for a communication tower and antenna request. The address is 11492-115th Avenue Southeast in Clear Lake, Section 27 of Clear Lake Township. It's 140 acres in the agricultural zoning district. Mark?
Yep.
All right. Clear Lake Township recommended approval of the request. We did not receive any other comments. Excel Energy is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a private 140-foot-tall monopole communication tower to support their, you know, LTE network for security reasons. It's a private communication tower with three antennas to help Excel get off the cellular grid. Public cellular grid, I guess I should clarify. The tower would be located in an existing fenced-in portion of a substation property. The fence and other security features are up to Excel standards already. So this is part of the Sherco overall project.
Complex. The applicant here?
Yes, that's me. George Rochicky, Excel Energy Siding and Land Rights, 4014 Nicollet Mall, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55401.
Anything to add to Mark's comments?
I think he covered it pretty well.
I'm assuming you're using this for your metering and relay controls and breaker controls?
Yeah, that's correct, right, Joe.
Trying to get that off the public system?
Exactly. The P in PLTE is for private, so.
There are, um, three conditions. One condition?
Three conditions.
Three conditions, all right. We'll take three conditions. There we are. All right, three, and you're aware of those?
I believe we are. Can we go over them real quick, please?
Yeah, will you put them up on the screen really quick? So the first one is building permits required to construct the communication tower. Any onsite structure over 200 square feet in size will require a building permit. Number two, it's private communicate, signage and emergency contact numbers must be posted at the fence surrounding the equipment. And then the last one is applicant shall comply with all federal and state and local law regulations.
Okay, yeah, these are all more than reasonable.
We had a communication tower here a couple of months ago, and we were worried about it, if it ever, if it ever failed, it would hit a building, and the applicant was saying they had a weak link in the, in the structure. Does this tower constructed the same way? Is there any concern about it falling at the base, or is there a weak, a weak link on halfway up?
The way that this tower is constructed is that if it were to fall, it falls in on itself, so, is that correct, Joe? I just want to make sure. Yeah, the, the tower is designed to collapse in on itself, so in any event, the footprint that it would take up if it were to fall over is just the footprint that it takes up while it's, while it's erected.
Do you have others like this in the complex?
We have been working on establishing this PLTE network all across our service territory in Minnesota, so we've got some of these towers established as well in Eden Prairie, St. Paul, we're working on one in Wayzetta, Coon Rapids, so it's part of a larger initiative and part, and, and this one in particular is just again trying to expand the range of this private network. So this will be the only one in the Sherco solar kind of a project.
Mr. Chair, so there's a cell tower about a mile away, so this will increase cell service for the residents then, if you're removed?
No, the, the, no one is going to be making any kind of phone calls on this network. Again, it's complete, it's taking off all Excel Energy fixed asset transmissions off of that public cellular spectrum. So Excel, we've actually leased out our own spectrum, our own frequency for the next 30 years, of course, with options to re-up on that agreement. So no one is going to be, no member of the public or Excel Energy employees or contractors or anything like that are going to be able to make phone calls over this network. Again, it's exclusively for transmission of information between fixed assets. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Will this tower have any conflict or with the other cell phones or television or farmers' communications with their tractors and their, you know, GPS and stuff? Will this, will the radio waves interfere with anything else in the area?
It will not. It's on its own separate frequency that's completely separated again from all of the other, you know, radio and other communication frequencies that are out right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Will you be using 10-meter frequencies?
I don't think we'll be interfering with his project either.
We know of a supplier.
All right, with that, let's open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Hearing done?
Move to close.
Move to close, good man.
I'll second.
Good seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's the desire of the commission?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request contingent on the three conditions.
Three conditions, all right. Can you do the findings? There's a second first. Matthew second, sorry. Now, now we can do the findings.
Great. That the condition of the permit will not be injurious to the enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish or impair property values.
Yes. The proposed location of the communication tower is nearly 1,200 feet away from the nearest houses, which are east, which are to the east. Lands to the north, south, and west are currently part of the Sherco solar project.
Okay. That the establishment of the CUP will not impede normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses predominant in the area.
Response is yes. The CUP will not impede normal development. The property is 100, is 140 acres parcel that is part of the Sherco solar project and land use for the collector substation. Lands to the east are not part of the Sherco solar project but are zoned agricultural and are currently farmed.
That the, have adequate utilities, access road, drainage, other necessary facilities been provided for?
Yes. The site is designated collector substation, approved under the Public Utility Commission. All necessary facilities are provided.
Have adequate measures been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use?
Yes. There is plenty of parking available on this property needed for construction and operations.
All right. Lastly, have adequate measures been or will be taken to prevent control of offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations, so none of these will constitute a nuisance, and control lighted signs and other lights in a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result?
Response is yes. Construction of the site will cause noise and additional traffic, but this will be temporary. Once the communication tower construction is complete, traffic will be minimal and consist of company vehicles inspecting the site on an as-needed basis.
The findings are complete. We have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, you have a issue on mining?
Yes, just want to make you aware, it may have been mentioned previously, but the Haven gravel proposed projects, project, it's almost 700 acres, it's being proposed in Haven Township. Their scoping environmental assessment worksheet is going out on public comment November 26 through December 26, and you'll probably be receiving an email with a link to that that'll allow you to review that document. And if you had, if you wanted to do so, you could publicly comment during that period. And then December 17th, we're going to have a meeting. We're required under state rule to have a public hearing. It's not a, or excuse me, to have a public meeting, it's not a hearing, but the residents, anyone within a half-mile of that project, we're going to notify them of the EAW. They'll have the ability to go to it via the county website or via a QR code, and we'll have a meeting on December 17th. Anybody that has questions, concerns, comments, they can come to the Becker Historical Society, the Sherburne County Historical Society in Becker, and we'll have possibly a presentation and answer questions for them at that time. This will come then before the Planning Commission in January, we anticipate, and then in February it'll go to the county board. This is called the scoping EAW. It's something we have never had to do before. This takes all the information on the environment and the issues that maybe need to be looked at further, and then it hones in on what do we think are the big issues that we need to look at as part of the EIS environmental impact statement. And that process is a longer process. I'm anticipating, you know, this will take probably nearly a year before we're done with all of this, and then all of those specific issues will be looked at. So this is one part of the process. Normally, you only see EAWs. We've never gone to an EIS in the 26 years I've been here. We have to do a mandatory EIS on this, and this is the process that we're following. We did hire a private consultant, they are helping us through this process, and so they will be at that meeting on the 17th as well. Yes.
Where is this located?
Yeah, what section?
I'm sorry, this is up in Haven Township. I don't know, it's, like I said, almost 700 acres. It's right on the border of where Haven Township has jurisdiction for the zoning that abuts the city of St. Cloud. Some of this area, not much of it, but some of it is in Haven's jurisdiction for zoning, but for the environmental review, they've given that jurisdiction to us. And so we're taking care of all the environmental review for both the county and Haven. Go ahead.
..................
It's between the Mississippi River and US Highway 10.
County Route 65. That's massive. That's being rebuilt right now? Yeah.
And it's on both sides of 65. It's on the north side of 65 and on the south side of 65.
Most of it in the city of St. Cloud, then?
No, none of it's in the city of St. Cloud.
None.
So we're zooming in on that area.
Collin Haven Township.
So if I could point here, but it's not, so you have County/State aid Highway 8, which runs at an angle over here to the left, right there, and this is County Road 65 that runs east, west, out to US Highway 10 on the far east that runs at an angle. And then it's land that's both on the north side here where they're moving the arrow and to the south, and it extends down into, you'll see there's solar, a triangle, and that's the very southern fringe of it, and it goes all the way down there, all the way north, and then north of 65, all the way up on, if, you see 3,300, it's east of there all the way up to the next road. You see 3,300? Yep, it's these couple parcels then as well. So it is a very large area that'll be impacted. We think, Carrie, you'll correct me on this, was it around 150, or was it more than that? People will get mailings.
150.
150?
I just emailed, Mitch, I just emailed you a map.
Who's the contractor?
Wholesome, H-O-L-C-I-M. That's who we're working with on it. I don't know off the top of my head if they have another company name, like, you know, if they're part of a larger company. I don't know that off the top of my head.
You familiar with it, Mike?
No, I'm not. Not either.
Aggregate Industries.
What does it spell out?
And then Mark mentioned Aggregate Industries is listed as the property owners on this, and they've owned it for quite some time.
They owned it for a long time, and it went from, it went from ag to ownership for someone who was going to mine it, and then it shifted to another. So it's, it's been, it's been coming for-
It's very close to where District 742 owns 90 acres, I believe, for a future land, for a future school.